Council, what questions or anything to comment before we go to public comment? You ready for public comment? Okay. I will call on folks and, you know, we have mics around so that you don't need to go to any particular mic to speak. You can just stand up and speak. So I did see one gentleman who said what we're going to do hand. So I'll call on him first and stand up and give us your name again, so, for the record.
My name is Paul Best, for the record. And instead of gloom and gloom, I have some very good remarks tonight about three departments in the city organization. The first one is the city clerk. The second is the attorney's office. The attorney's office. And the third one is the assessing office. They've been very helpful, very transparent. That work for them, are very nice and very cordial. And I'm proud to be a Troy citizen and having them work for us.
I appreciate that, thank you. Who else would like to make a comment on a public comment? Mr. Savage, Mr. Savage?
Yes, good evening. I do have some papers I would like the city clerk to pass to members of the council. And maybe I can get these three on the other side. These are...
Thank you, we'll do it. Go ahead and start. Okay, thanks.
Okay, these are basically snippets that I took from great news of last campaign. And it's regarding, as you know, I've quoted several times on studies, et cetera. And mostly regarding the amount of money that we spend on studies. And this one, I'm not going to read it all, but the headline is "Forty Million Dollars Spent on Testing Contract Could Have Saved the DPS," could have served the DPS Detroit Public Services and better. And it, the author, who was part of that testing team, described it as a forty million dollar... And as I read this, I think about the hundreds of thousands of dollars Troy has spent on studies, surveys, et cetera. And I see really no evidence that the city has benefited from any of this. The future program is already obsolete. One comment, a councilman recently stated that times change and we can't use that plan now. Well, times continually change. Five years ago, if we assumed that everything would remain the same, and we spent fifty thousand dollars on that assumption. Troy recently paid one hundred thousand dollars study by the ICMA. Incidentally, I've heard the ICMA referred to as independent. And also I saw in the newspaper on two occasions, it was referred to as international. Now, I don't know which was correct. But that made me wonder where this group originated and how much, basically how much success they have restructuring cities in Michigan's present economic environment. And listening tonight, the numbers that I saw totally befuddled me. There's no way I could keep up with that. But in the general concept, I got the feeling this all can come back to cheap. To so... Well, there's nothing there. And so, that's the case then, and I began, I was wondering why we spent the one hundred thousand dollars. And now we spend another twenty-two thousand on a study to find what people want. And as an example, I can tell you what I want. I want to see this waste we're spending stop. This study is, nobody has shown me how these studies have actually benefited. We get lots of vague statements, well, these are good and we couldn't do it without it. But it was known to be that studies before, go back years ago, everybody didn't have a study. And we end up with it coming back to us solving our own problems. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in the public comment? Mike Kerr?
Yes, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Most of you have seen this before. Back in 1995, which was fifteen years ago, Gary Meyer took over patrol division and gave each command officer from each ship a task to enhance the quality of life of people in their city and hold them accountable for that. One of the things that, while he, when he got to me, I was a day shift supervisor with Lieutenant Rossman. As you're going to address this false alarm problem. Well, Rossman being a lieutenant, me being a sergeant, I got to do this. And there's nothing more demeaning to a road patrol officer than to be down in an area where he knows that crime is being committed and gets sent to the other side of the city on something that has nothing to do whatsoever with law enforcement. The date, the date of this is October 10th, 1996, and law and justice purposes and situations still exist. These are alarm companies' statements. One of the, one of the major alarm companies in the country that do a lot of business in the city of Troy, as a matter of fact, charged between thirty and a hundred dollars for a monitoring... as a matter of fact, charged between thirty and a hundred dollars for a monitoring fee. Their headquarters is not even in this country. Their monitoring station is not even in the state. Yet, a thirteen-year-old can go home, punch in the wrong alarm code, and we send two officers that certainly are doing better things. As a police officer, I resented us responding to a contract between a private company, an alarm company, and a homeowner. It's not my business whatsoever, what a homeowner does on his own property. But when he contracts with a private company, and then the private company sends us to something that has... To do with police work, I resented that. I resented it much more as a taxpayer. Aren't we tired? Twenty percent of what we did then, and probably about twenty percent of what we do now, is we're surrogate for alarm companies. One alarm company that does business in the city of Troy has six million customers. Six million times thirty or one hundred is an awful lot of money. But yet, we respond to their call that has nothing to do with law enforcement. These uniformed officers in this room know how to catch burglars. And responding to false alarms is not, or any alarm is not, how to do it. The idea is to lock them up before they get to Troy and send them a message, never come here again. And they're very good at that. These are, this is the alarm company's words, not mine. Find them on the internet. "False alarms exhaust resources of the police, fire, and emergency personnel and keep them from responding to actual emergencies." That's their words, not mine. Second, "False alarms increase costs to taxpayers, security service providers, and users, requiring additional personnel to respond to alarms." I think we ought to get out of the business of responding to alarms altogether. And originally, when we began this new alarm system where we were registering them and actually billing them for them, it wasn't uncommon for the alarm companies to subsidize the homeowner... Fine, because twenty-five dollars were was, and they're getting thirty dollars a month from these people. Do the math. The only other thing I'd like to comment here, I'm sure these ICMA folks dreamed about living in Troy, the safe city of Michigan. But the only other thing that I want to comment on now is the shifting or task force assignment situation. Nobody in this room believes that the war on drugs, which encompasses about eighty percent of our corrections problems, our courts, is going to be solved by the police department alone. They do a tremendous job. None better on this planet. However, some of these subsidiaries of these task forces provide monies to the police department and to the city through forfeiture act that subsidize things like partially Troy youth assistance. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bell Community. And the Troy Community Coalition that goes out and proactively insists the school district and the police department in getting out this message about drugs and alcohol and tobacco. And the city of Troy, the city of Troy Police Department, Troy Community Coalition, and Troy School District have been very successful in... ...of drug use and alcohol use and tobacco use amongst our teenagers. And I'm afraid if we start pulling back these people and we start losing this revenue, that these organizations that are made up specifically to address those problems are going to cease and desist. And I think it's imperative that we keep them alive and well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Audrey Zambruski?
I'm back, just to let everybody know.
Welcome.
I've been to Ohio for a whole month, and then I got ill. But anyway, I agree with him. Drug programs, I don't know if you remember, I've lived here now thirty, it'll be thirty-three years. Back where I lived in Dearborn Heights, they had the Mayor's News Committee on Drugs. That was the first program they ever started to get people off was the methadone program. Well, the methadone program became a drug habit. And I had gone to the mayor of the city at that time and said, hey, we've got a problem. And he wanted to know what it was. And I said, hey, these kids are, there's no central location. When you get drugs and you want to get them off the program, you have to have a central location. They can go there, pick up their name tag, go back to their own city. But if they go to one city, they can be registered in another city and another one, where the people that give it out to you centrally know you've been there and you picked up your name. So you can't come in with another name because they're going to know you on ID and everything else. And the mayor thought about it, and then picked up some of the people... Maybe she's got a point here. Well, they did stop the program. And it was a good thing, because I've heard more now that there's more people on methadone than anything. And they got caught on it with, you know, cake on it. So taking away that, yes, it does help the kids, and I agree with the program that they got.
Thank you. Anyone else there? Well, we thank you all for coming. Councilmembers, I know we're going to give some thought to the things that we heard tonight and the next steps. And we already heard the chief comment about some things that are already in the works from the report. And then, Mr. Zerlai, are we having a meeting, not tonight, but where we're going to combine the things from the Report One and Report Two?
We can do that in the alternative, just to let you know. I've already spoken essentially to every employee over three different meetings in the council chambers, indicating what the results of the ICMA report was for the first seven elements. And essentially, we are going to a cluster-type organization. I can do that under my own purview of authority. And I'm going to do that and advise all employees that essentially, effective April 1st, John is about the only person that's maintaining this cluster that's going to be added to by having human resources, purchasing, human resources, and a clerk's office added to his cluster that he currently has, a planned administration. Mark is going to... Deploy... To be Director of Community and Economic Development, he's going to absorb Cindy Stewart and Pam Valenteck from that component. I've already mentioned that I've hired Monica Ireland to be the administrative assistant to the city manager, as well as managing or director of continuous improvement. So her job is to look at the ICMA report essentially, and plug me and other staff members to look at implementing the other alternate recommendations that ICMA has. There is the police element. Here, we spoke about that. The fire department pretty much got a free ride. You can't beat free when you have 160 volunteers. No one is doing the job that we're doing in the fire department. The fifth element, where the Public Works Department used to report to Mark, Tim Richnack, the Public Works Director, now reports directly to me because we have a lot of work to do there in restructuring that department as well. And the Public Works is also absorbing the Parks Department. We split up Parks and Recreation. Now, Mark is going to have Recreation under Stu Alderman's stewardship. And Jeff Bigler, who was going to be laid off because of the E-Rip program, Tom Roseworn, who's in charge of Streets and Drains, we're combining Streets and Drains with Parks, so we're saving money there. And we're not laying off Jeff Bigler. Jeff's going to become the superintendent of Parks, Streets, and Drains. That'll be effective sometime next month. So, you know, we're negotiating labor contracts. I want to get something in place essentially, in all due haste. But that's a two-way street that I've got to go down. And so, we are rocking. In that regard. Any other changes would require a budget approval by Mayor and Council. And if you're okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Council, several of you had expressed opinions about, after we received both reports, what would our next steps be? Did some of you want to comment or suggest something at this point? Anyone? Councilmember?
I'll speak up. And I think Mary said it best during the comments when she said to the chief and to John, now we want to see what the timeline for implementation is. It's nice to say that there should be one, but it would help us specifically to know... And I know that some of this will take some thought, and particularly, some of the task force units and those sorts of things that may be phased out or may find some self-sufficiency. But a good general outline of what the implementation of this part is. I know, John, you've given us the next six weeks on implementing the first part that we got. It might be helpful to have the rest of it, what we do after the 15th of May, or 13th.
I think the timeline would be very helpful for us to understand it, but also when we explain out to the community what we're going to do and how the process is going to go, and with the restructuring and redeployment and those kinds of things. Okay, shelter for us to hear that, so.
It's a good accountability piece and to show the steps and implementation. They also gave kind of fast, somewhere like sixty days, you can do this quickly. So we'd really want to see that. We know that you can handle it, and you have help. We know that you can, but if we can see that, that's very helpful. I guess the only other loose end, Madam Mayor, was that they brought up the plus four. And I know we're going into budgeting, and we're doing that multi-year budget. I don't know if it would be best to get a direction from Council for John Lomarado regarding the plus four for sworn officers.
There's not much of an impact this current fiscal year.
We're in multi-year budget.
But because he's, when you give us, Mr. Lomarado, when you give us, when we do our budget study sessions, it's not only going to be for the next year's budget. It's going to be a three-year budget projection again. So it's important to have that... or including, going to 97, including the plus four. And I just needed to know from Mr. Lomarado and Mr. Zerlik when you need to know from us about that. So maybe tonight we don't need to do it, but let's find out. The sooner the better, right?
He needs to know.
Yeah, we plan on presenting at the April 18th City Council meeting the proposed budget, which would also include the three-year budget, so, which would incorporate the timeframe that we're talking about here with the reduction in the Police Department. So, remember Council's desires. If you like to look at four patrol positions being put back into that, then sooner the better. Put that in the budget. It's always up for discussion during budget discussion times, but if you want it in, we need to know sooner than later.
I'll have to go over here and ask, then we can come back over. Councilwoman Bautista, are you ready to say?
Well, I, again, I believe that to have the safety net that we have built into the community, that the original projections may very well, as with the first part of the report, cut too deeply. And so I think that we really do need to figure out how to put those four sworn officers back into the budget ultimately. officers notice it, but the public doesn't. And that's what you try and do, but I think we need to really consider putting that.
Councilwoman Harlock?
I guess I would concur with Councilwoman Slater. I think that, I'm not against it, but I would like to wait and see where we're going with certain things and also like to know, you know, what the trade-off is, what, you know, what we're essentially giving up to accomplish this. You know, I think because this is what they propose, I would obviously be inclined to go in that direction, but I'd like to wait and get some more of the information that will develop over the next couple of months here.
Okay. Councilwoman Bautista?
Yes, I agree. I think we don't have to make that decision tonight. Let's give it some time, see how the negotiations are going. And I would defer to the chief as to what he feels as he moves forward and what we need as far as head counts.
I have spoken about the fact that our community, both the residents and the business community, have come to expect a level of excellence which far exceeds what some communities Their Police Department. And so I think that our exemplary Police Department folks are expecting to keep a level of service that they've come to enjoy in this community. And I would be very concerned if our levels of staff would be too low. And so I think the replacement of the four officers would be appropriate, knowing that that would take us to 97, which is the 1978 levels. And I see with the redeployment and restructuring, it's moving things around, but I still think that we need to have enough people. And I liken it to what happened with our snowy winter that we had, the second snowiest February ever in Michigan, that people complained right away. I want what I used to have with my snowplowing. I want the snowplow to go down the road and clear it off. And then I want a smaller vehicle to come right behind and clear out the end of the subdivision so I can get out. And my comment to the people was, well, you need people to do that. So there's, that's what I relate there to the Police Department. You need people to do certain kinds of things. Yes, we can use sophisticated equipment and we can do online things and we can do all, all things like that, but you need a certain number of actual bodies to do things. And so I don't want us to get to be too low. That's my view.
It was an excellent discussion that's being brought up. The benefit of a multi-year budget is that you have to make some hard decisions and decisions getting to the level of 93 police officers. I'd be the first one to jump up and say, yes, let's add four more. But the fact of the matter is that we then have to find money to support that. And we're currently in deficit spending, if you will, because every year we budget more for expenses than we budget for revenues and have to use a fund balance. So then my question gets flipped back to you. We're already down essentially by 13, 14 to a four-day work week for everybody else in the city. And we're using our fund balance, so it'll be a discussion that has to be made, I think, at your level. We'll give you the options, obviously, but you'll have to decide where you want to find the money to put that back, assuming no increase in the revenue stream.
Councilwoman Slater?
Yeah, I was going to say that in addition, from my perspective, you know, four might not be enough after we've talked to the public or we've done a survey. We're taking the officers out of the schools. Maybe they want, maybe we should keep the officers in the schools. So I think there are some things that we still have to look at doing. Just because they said, let's go to 93, doesn't mean we might not want to do 97. We might not want to do something different than that. And I would like some time to digest some of this stuff.
Councilwoman Bautista?
I would agree. I mean, I think my biggest concern is, yes, no, we'll need the bodies there. And four bodies will not bring us back to where we are today and where we have been. not comfortable at this juncture saying, just put them back there and we'll figure out a way to move it or to generate some sort of revenue or efficiency without going on the projections that we've been using. I mean, I definitely would like to have that conversation. I would like to have other conversations about the information that we've heard tonight and the information that we heard in the first portion as well. I have a feeling we'll probably do a lot of that in the midst of our budget discussions. But at this point, I don't know if I would just want to authorize to put that specific number back in there. I would feel more comfortable, we've been working with the numbers that we use for the three-year budget all year, so at least I know what's there and now we'll be dealing with the updated version and the numbers that we'll be approving for next year. So I would like to look at that all together before I make the decision. But that, of course, isn't to say that if there's a way to do that, then I would absolutely want to.
And the, it's not for this coming year, be the year after?
Actually, fiscal year 13, 14.
13, 14. So it would have to be planned. Really would have to be planned. I guess my concern finally is just that this has to do with sustainability. I mean, that's what they were looking at. Can you make it on that matrix? And when it comes to a sustainable Police Department, what are we about as a city? This is the public safety, which is the core service. That's my concern. we do need to look at that and make some hard decisions and not kick the car down. Every time we're doing a multi-year budget, we have to look at that third year out and pull it back to where we are. So, so do think about it. Reread the report if necessary and let's, let's do some of the real planning we have to do.
Anything else, Council? Okay, then we're in adjournment.